And would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Knudsen?
Here.
District one, Morissette?
Here.
District two, Brokaw?
Here.
District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, Wyland?
Here.
District five, O'Malley?
Here.
District six, Percham?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's anyone here that would like to address the council about any matter that may come before us in the future, this is your chance. Anyone wish to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to be heard? All right, next item is our consent agenda. Will you read those items, please?
To approve the regular meeting minutes of October 6th, 2008, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $9,569.72, a detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request, to approve restricted parking on the west side of Aspen Drive from Mayor Road to Hanley Road, and to review the issue again in May of 2009, to approve the installation of a parking meter at 100 Commercial Street to be funded from the Parking Utility Fund, to approve the request to close the 500 block of Second Street, Highway 35, for the annual light-up night parade at 7:00 PM on Friday, November 28th, 2008, to approve the appointment of the following City of Hudson residents as additional election inspectors for the Democratic Party, Robert Rodriguez, Barbara Burkholder, Mike Tronstadt, John Heck, and Nancy Heck, to place on file the quarterly report of the building inspector and the Public Utility Commission minutes of October 14th, 2008. That is all.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Move for approval.
Motion and second. Now roll call.
Morissette?
Aye.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Percham?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yes.
Thank you, and those items are approved. And next, well, actually, I guess with your indulgent, I told Chuck Schwartz that we could do his update early tonight, and then he could go home early. So Chuck, without objection, we're going to move you around on the schedule and hear your report right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just pretty much wrapping up all of the projects, public work projects this year. We have minor work order items left for, you know, the mill and overlay, some of the lakefront stuff. Also, working with Tom, I got him some numbers as far as, and project scope to, to take an engineering review of, take a look at Carmichael Road from Cooley down to just north of, or right around the dog track there where it's, the hatch has been completed. And so, Tom and my inspector will be spending a good portion of this week reviewing the road so we can put together recommendations and, and come back with some real good cost estimates for the council. Other than that, I don't know if there's any specific questions for me regarding?
Go ahead.
One quick one on the wall of the lakefront. I was down there for the weekend in Spirit of St. Croix. The sand seems to be washing out of the pavers. I don't know if you want to look at that or not, or have someone look at it. The sand is washing out of the pavers. That's going to be a problem.
Do you mean the pavers that are?
Next to the old seawall and the new path. All that sand is washing.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. I mean, you'll get some of that until things are kind of settled in place, but you think it's, it's, concerned it might be a little excessive.
It looks like it. You'll see all the sand on the paths everywhere, on the bottom.
Okay. Thank you.
And then back to Chuck's previous point, Tom Zulli had suggested to me that it might be good to spend some time this year with money from this year's budget to get a better handle and let us get a better estimate for that big mill and overlay project that we anticipate on Carmichael. And so, he got a price from Chuck or Chuck's consulting engineers for what it would cost. It was the kind of thing that's within a department had discretion for the amount, I think it was, I haven't heard any different, but I told him, he, he had enough money in his engineering budget for this year to do it.
Yeah, it was estimated at $3,400.
And so, that's basically what you were alluding to, when you said you got some numbers to him.
Yes, that's correct.
It was the cost of doing that part, which last year we waited and we did it in the spring, essentially after, I don't know when exactly, but a couple months before the final bids were done, I guess, we were out measuring and so on. We're hoping to do that a little earlier this year.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's all part of the design process, so it would have to be done in the spring, we might as well do it now, so we can get better estimates and, and firm up that project scope, and then, you know, the, the design fee would be.
So we're estimating things like how much of the curb is going to need replacement and things like that that add to the cost. You have to actually go out there and walk it all and, and inspect it.
Yeah, make decisions of the start and stop points and, and the type of repair that's necessary.
Did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Any other questions for Chuck? Thanks a lot.
Well, I guess one, one other comment. I am attending a pavement management seminar this Thursday, and so whatever I learn, I'll be happy to share with your staff.
Great, thank you. Now, back to our agenda. Next up is from the Plan Commission. Final development plans for the Hampton Inn and Suites, 83 units, part of Lot 10, Bantera Commercial Development at 2610 Pearson Drive, application by Hudson Hotel Associates LLC.
Good evening. Committee recommendation is to approve the final development plans for the 83 unit Hampton Inn and Suites facility located at 2610 Pearson Drive and part of Lot 10, Bantera Commercial Development, with the following conditions. Final plans to be amended to address the city engineer's memorandum of October 9th, 2008, including the requirement of provision of stormwater permit as built plans in pre-construction meeting. Those last three elements or things will come right before the construction or afterwards. The stormwater consideration was, is just amending the stormwater plan to hopefully prevent any flooding of the facility itself in case of large storm events. Did visit with Alan Ketchpool, the project engineer, and he's assured me that those plans have now been amended to address that per the city engineer recommendation. The second condition is signage on the east facade to be limited to the area immediately above the east entrance to the facility. I recommended that consideration because at the higher elevation towards the top of that facility, you'd be at the elevation of some of the residences to the east that are located in the town of Hudson. I thought if the sign was lowered to the, to the entrance on the east side of the building, it'd be less intrusive. The primary signage is right to the north and to the west side of the building, so they do have an amended elevation of building that now shows at. Mr. Craig Sedanico, Brian Zeller, and the project engineer Alan Ketchpool are here tonight to answer any questions, or if you want a presentation by them, they're ready to present the information also. If there's any questions, I may answer for the common council, I'd be pleased to do so.
Any questions before we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application, final development plans. Discussion.
Does the motion include the two recommendations that Denny has just spoken about?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to approve the committee recommendation. Any other questions? Do you wish to hear any presentation about this project? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no.
Just one point of clarification, there was some question as to fire suppression, water pressure, so forth. I just, rest assured, the city staff carefully looks at all those issues, particularly in a project this size with a building elevation that it is, those types of issues, we reviewed that quite carefully in a couple of staff meetings, face-to-face meetings with the developers, so just want to allow that understanding to be made, so, you know, it is, it is a very important issue that staff reviews during our, our only individual review with the developer.
All right.
Can I have a comment?
Yes.
And it's, I don't know, it's just my feeling that when we have people here to present, it may be, well, we may not be interested in hearing, and I think people at home may be interested, and I think to set a reasonable time limit of five to 10 minutes to let them share about the project, just to inform the public, would be worthwhile. Just a comment.
I'd second that motion.
It wasn't a motion, it was a comment, but.
Well, we're, we're here, and if I'm hearing that you're rethinking whether you'd like to hear from them, we can still hear from them, they probably love to tell about their project. You want to have a brief, is that what you're wishing?
I mean, people at home may be interested, and we have a lot of information in front of us, but they do not.
Good evening. My name's Craig Sedanico. I'm with American Design and Build, we're the architectural firm and construction management company, working with David and Brian at Bantera. What I'm pretty sure you just approved is an 83-unit, four-story Hampton Inn and Suites. This is the building footprint, north is to the top of the page. Bittersweet Drive runs around the east side of the, I'm sorry, Center Drive, we have it mislabeled on here, runs around the rear of the property. Just to give you a sense of where you're at, this is Perkins Restaurant right now, and Buffalo Wild Wings is down in this area. Front elevation of the building shows that there are two different colors of brick, concrete masonry units that'll match the existing buildings out there. A nice note for your community is that the typical Hampton Inn and Suites, the amount of ephes, the stucco is, is the, the whiter-looking material here. Typically, that's reversed, that the majority of the building is ephes with just some brick, masonry accents. Here in Hudson, we reversed that, so the majority of the building is masonry, and just some of the finer cornice, parapet details are, are made out of ephes. That's the front elevation. Denny mentioned some of the signage to the rear. This just shows you where we made that alteration. This Hampton Inn and Suites signage originally was up near the top. The east really isn't, I said at the Plan Commission meeting, that if you get that close to the building and you need the signage to identify where you're going, you've got bigger problems than lack of signage. So we did lower that down per Denny's recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Any questions? All right, thanks for the presentation. We're excited.
Thank you.
Looks good.
Appreciate it.
I'm happy to have you. All right, back to our agenda, and we'll go on to the Finance Committee agenda. Applications for operators' licenses, the Finance Committee recommended approval of the staff recommendation for approval of a list that was in your packet. These are regular operators' licenses for the period October 21st, 2008 to June 30th, 2010.
Mr. Mayor, I recuse myself.
Mr. Morissette is recused.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the regular operators' licenses. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Operators' licenses are approved. The next item, number four, consider approval of budget adjustments. At the Finance Committee, we took these in three separate recommendations. Betty's here to answer any questions you might have. There's a sheet that, in your issue packet, has a list of interdepartmental transfers and transfers from one account to another, some of which have been previously approved back in March, July, August, and September by the council already, some have not yet been approved, but we'd like to do all of these to clean up our books, and the Finance Committee recommended that on issue sheet B.4, and then the attached list of adjustments that, recommendation was for approval of all of those.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? The next two, one concerns fuel, one concerns a billing that was for a larger amount than had been anticipated in the budget. The first is a bill that came from Ramsland and Wagon Incorporated. They're a appraisal firm, professional appraisals. They did the appraisal work for us in our, in the suit over the valuation of the shopping center at Plaza 94 that's owned by Kraus Anderson. And we had received an estimate for the work that it wouldn't go over $5,000, and that was when we were asking them to do a appraisal for the year 2006 assessment. As it happened, our advice was that we group all three years under dispute together and try to do a settlement of all three. We did that. They did an adjustment, so they added to their appraisal work concerning the value in 2007 and 2008. With that, we then came to a settlement, which ultimately saved the city, I think, quite a bit of time and legal expense, was a favorable settlement for probably everyone, but it went over budget. So, recommendation from the Finance Committee for this one was to take $711 out of the building inspector's budget for 2008, and to take the remainder of the shortfall from fund balance, rationale being the expense actually pertained to previous budget years 2006, '07, and '08, as does the fund balance, and so that's the best match we have as far as how to pay for this. And what, what was the total, and I'm escaping me how much over budget or how much we're transferring. We're transferring a total of $7,900? Betty, what, what is?
$7,846 from fund balance and $7,011 from the building inspector.
Yeah, okay.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve that transfer. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Last budget adjustment is for fuel. Fuel budget has been difficult to predict, and we went over our fuel budget. Betty, would you like to explain a little the difference in the general fund, the enterprise funds and so on, and what, what you recommend?
Our original budget was set at $153,200 for the whole city. Of that, the general fund had $104,700, and the enterprise funds, which is the water, sewer, and ambulance, had a budget of $18,000. I'm sorry. They had the balance of $28,000, $38,000, $48,000, $48,000, so it made $153,000 total. So, we have hit that balance, we've spent $156,000 citywide as of September 30th, so we're going to need a budget adjustment to get through the rest of the year. I projected out that for the total city, we'll probably need an additional $53,000 based on the last nine months, so that's an average of the lower prices with the higher prices, and hopefully with the price of fuel right now, we'll, we'll be better than that, but it's $53,000 is what I'm requesting. Of that, $35,000 is in the general fund, and the remaining $18,000 comes from the enterprise funds. And the general fund, I'm recommending that it's coming from the fund balance. We have a healthy fund balance that we added to last year, and this would probably be about the only place we could come up with $35,000 at this time. We have a shortfall of about $130,000 in our revenues that I'm projecting out for the end of the year, so if everybody hits budget, we should be depleting our fund balance a little bit. Based on that and based on this, we're still okay, and also the adjustment that we made for the appraisal. So, the enterprise funds, they can either take it from their current operations, if they have the funds available, if not, it'll be coming from their retained earnings. So I'm recommending that we adjust the budget by $53,000.
Okay, so that's the recommendation from the Finance Committee, was to accept Betty's proposal on that, and.
So moved.
Good. We have a motion?
Second.
I do have a question.
In a second, yes.
Is it enough for, with the Farmers' Island Act suggesting we're going to have a lot of snow? Is this the time to do it?
Well, we're, you know, some of the things you're approving tonight, we've already essentially done them, but we're, we're asking for your approval of how we're going to account for them, and it's that way with the fuel usage, too. We will need to use the fuel to keep the police cars running, to plow the streets, we, we need to do it. We're doing what we can to minimize it, but it's going to be what it's going to be. If you're asking, are we being proactive for next year? I think we are. If you look at our total usage in 2007, is on this spreadsheet. In 2007, we used $144,000 for fuel, and so in the current year budget, we increased it from 144 to 153, so we increased it about eight or $9,000, roughly 6% over the previous year. This year, we're being very careful with that, and we decided to increase the budget by 40...
We were doing 45% based on last year's budget, yes, but now with this adjustment, we're bringing the total city up to $206,000. 2009 budget is $215,000.
Okay, so, you know, this is an unpredictable area. If, when we were first putting our budget together, if you could have predicted for me that gasoline would be close to a dollar less today, by the time we approved that budget, I'd have been flabbergasted, but here we are. I'd love to be able to pre-buy and lock in some for next year, and we're actually looking at the possibility of doing that through a large group purchase plan. Some of our Public Works employees actually came and suggested that because they were aware of that. Others are tying into group buying elsewhere, and so we're looking at that, but, you know, essentially, we need to do what we're going to do, and then it comes down to Betty wants approval for how she's accounting for it. That's where we're at. Go ahead.
Do we have historical data on which quarters we typically use the most?
I do. We use our, of course, our winter usage is higher, in the summer months, we have, we have a high usage point, too. July, August is right in that mark, we, we have a high use, but I do have that data. I don't have it here tonight, but I do have it.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Next item on number five is application of Hudson Hockey Association for a temporary Class B retailer's license to sell beer at the Hudson Crusaders Hockey Games. Yes, they probably didn't realize. And we discussed this at some length at the Finance Committee. This is a little bit of a different application than what we typically see by nonprofit groups asking for an event license. This is for what's called Junior League hockey, so these are hockey players that are, it's not high school hockey, and it's not the typical youth hockey program. Junior League is more like 16- to 20-year-olds, and so the hockey games are happening already, and there hasn't been beer there, but they'd like to be able to sell beer there. So the application is coming from Hudson Hockey Association. They would be the nonprofit. At the Finance Committee, we talked about a couple of issues. One is that this type of license can only be given for up to a period of four.
14 days.
14 days at the most, and.
I mean, it's assumed in the law that that's 14 consecutive days.
14 consecutive days, for a 14-day period, okay. What the applicants wish to do is for their schedule of hockey games, which includes games played in Hudson, it's a nine-team league, and, but more than, about half of the team is using Hudson as their, what, how many are using Hudson as the home base? Just one? Just one. Okay, so we've got a series between now and March, a series of dates at which they hope to be able to sell beer there. One of the issues was, do we approve all those dates at once? And on that point, the Finance Committee recommends no, that we approve a license, they'll be back again, we may approve these dates either individually, or possibly they may choose to apply for more than one at a time, and we may choose to approve more than one at a time, but that'll be a decision to be made at, at the time. For tonight, all that was applied for was a single date, which was November 22nd. The second issue, what came up, Catherine said that the application needs to specify where in the building, it's under Part 2D of the state application form, if part of the building described fully all premises covered under the application, which floor or floors, or room or rooms the license is to cover. We didn't have that, but we asked for that to be developed during the committee meeting, and so the applicant has provided that for you now on this photocopy, and so it will be a restricted area within the arena. The other part is that they've agreed to use the wristband system. And with that, Finance Committee recommended approval of this specific date.
I have to recuse myself again?
Mr. Percham recuses himself.
Move to approve, November 22nd.
And we have a motion to approve with the, with the application with this as a part of it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any questions or discussion?
The discussion at Finance, I thought, was a good discussion about, these, these temporary licenses are for one day at one event, and this does give us the opportunity to look at this and say, you know, this is more than one event going forward, but one at a time, we decide whether or not this is going to, that we, that this worked, it worked well, and if we wanted to continue something there, and what does this, what does the whole season mean? So I think there's a lot more discussion that needs to go on there, but the one event is a place to start and have that discussion.
I think Lee brings up a good point, and the reason for my motion in favor is so that we can launch that experiment to see how this goes. Really, at first blush, not too crazy about the idea of kind of an ongoing beer garden at this location. I don't know about that, but that's not what we're asked to decide tonight. So I think we can do one. So I think we can do one date and continue discussion based on that experience.
I'm okay with the one night, but I have concerns that, I agree with Scott on this continued beer garden, and some of the issues that have come up in the past with some of the events up there, been in the paper, broken fingers fights. And I'd like to see public safety, or at least the police, the chief of police, look and get his feedback on the, on the whole thing as well, or public safety for that matter.
It does say they're planning to have security. Well...
In Finance, he said they're adding security. They're going to have uniformed security when this goes in.
I'd still like some input from our police department and possibly public safety in the next couple times they come for this.
I'm sure Murray's aware of this. My indication also at council was that I think we can look at this as a trial, and then it will respond to applications as they come to us, but if there are issues there, the applications may begin to be either contingent on further restrictions or not approved, and that'll be a decision for future councils for future dates. And I think this is a framework for going forward and giving it a try. Further discussion? All in favor, yes?
And Lee had a good point about this opening a precedence on other venues such as soccer, so keeping that in mind.
I guess I'm hoping we can revisit this, even in the event that there aren't incidences up there. I think we still have the authority to review each one and to see if we need to come up with more clarification as to how to move forward as a council. I think what I'm hearing from the council is that they're reserving their rights to review each independently, and issuance of one temporary license does not...
Right.
...provide any expectation for issuance of further licenses.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries, and the application is approved. Yes, sir.
On behalf of the Hudson Hockey Association, I'd like to advise you to that game on November 22nd starts at seven o'clock.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks for your help tonight, too. Let's see, that takes care of Finance agenda. Public Works Committee didn't meet. Public Safety was all on the consent agenda. Update on projects we had already, so this is going to take us down to new business, number V. Consider the date for the December council meeting. Devin?
We realized that with November 24th, the next meeting would have been December 1st with Thanksgiving. We didn't anticipate there would be any activity that we, we're recommending that we have one meeting in December on the 15th that would allow all of the committees to have met prior to that, and take care of any business, and that we would avoid any possible absences or whatever around the Christmas holiday.
You're confident about final approval of budget for next year?
November 24th, yes. We're on track for that, so...
And if not, we could schedule a special meeting?
Correct. But the budget hearing is planned for schedule for November 24th.
So we'll meet on the 15th and the 29th?
No, we would only meet on the 15th.
Only on the 15th.
In the past, most years, we do not, they cancel or don't have the second meeting in December just for people's holiday activities, so we thought this might be a compromise.
We're drinking eggnog then, so...
We thought this, this would, we also then wouldn't, if we had the 8th, and maybe it would be committees that hadn't met, and they would be delayed till January to have action, because I know that Public Safety means later in the month now, so that's our recommendation.
Move to approve December 15th as the meeting date for December.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this item. Any discussion? I think to answer your question in more detail about where we're at with the budget, I think we're on track. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Move on to fall leaf collection program. Got an issue sheet. Have any comments on it?
Would like to, well, make a motion to approve the dates. We have set these really at the beginning of the year, but to open this for discussion, if Lee will say aye, second you, then we can continue.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Anyone want a second to motion to approve the leaf dates?
I'll second.
Thank you. Not really necessary, as this was all approved last spring, but for those who may be new to Hudson, we do have twice a year a free leaf collection, and it's at the West End Garage. If you head north on Second Street, turn left at Division. If you find yourself going across the Malalo Bridge to North Hudson, stop Corky's Landing and turn back, and it's right there before you, two blocks before Lake Malalo. It's open starting this Saturday, October 25th, and going for three consecutive Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Someone will be on hand to help you with those bags. Bring your leaves in the bags, nothing bigger than 90 gallon, please, and in the bags just leaves and grass. Really no pumpkins, okay? No old tires, no tree limbs, just leaves and grass. Leave them in the bag, there will be someone there to assist you, putting them into the dumpsters. We are also open from noon to 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, in the intervening two weeks between those three Saturdays. So the three Saturdays are October 25th, November 1st, and November 8th at the West End Garage from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Now, we have something new this year. In response to some inquiry from the public, we have mulched up some trees, and we have wood chips to give away free at our location in North Hudson in the Village, and that's on Crapley. So look for the Rod and Gun Club sign as you're proceeding north out of North Hudson. Turn to the right, which is east, and proceed to an area that you'll see right there operated by the City of Hudson, and that is going to be for two of the three Saturdays. That's the first Saturday, October 25th, and the second one, November 1st, and that's only in the morning, 8:00 a.m. to noon. But those wood chips are free, and there will be someone up from our staff there on-site to help you load them into your trailer or your pickup. If none of this appeals to you and you want your stuff still picked up, we do have a special deal with Violia during this time. For $1 per bag, which is 50 cents off the regular price, you can have them pick it up at your yard. You need to call Violia at their number that's on everything that they, that they give us, and you need stickers, and the stickers are available downtown here at City Hall or up on the hill, either at County Market or at Family Fresh Store. That's the end of the commercial.
Don't we typically send out information cards as well?
Oh, I forgot to mention, yes.
Okay.
You, I was going to hold up a card that we got back from, was addressed to Mr. James Hoff, but it's returned. But you will be getting a card this week.
I'll look for it in the mail.
Any further discussion about leaves? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. That's approved. Next item, number D. Consider withdrawal from the State of Wisconsin Health Insurance Plan, Resolution Number 20-08.
Move for approval.
I'm going to suspend the rules.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
We have a motion to suspend the rules towards adoption of Resolution 20-08. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion on suspension of the rules.
Shouldn't we talk about E first?
Let's just talk about E first. Any objections to talking about it before we do it?
There is a new resolution on your table. As of Friday, I did not have the official resolution from the state, so we just put something in the packets. The one on the table is the wording that's stated here, so I just wanted to mention that.
I think you make an excellent point, and so let's do it that way. You've got an issue sheet in your packets describing what's being proposed. The brief background for the public is that for a number of years, we have been a participant in the State of Wisconsin Local Government Employers Health Insurance Plan. And under that plan, next year, our costs for health insurance for city employees citywide will come to a total of $1.487 million. So you've got just under $1.5 million under that plan. That's a 10% increase from last year. Our increases over the last several years have ranged from the high single digits to close to 20% one year. The plan has been, also has presented some problems in the network because the employees have to choose between a network that in many cases has good Wisconsin coverage but poor coverage of health providers in the Twin Cities area, or the inverse. So for example, if you want to be able to go to a doctor both in Hudson and in Stillwater, in some cases, that was a difficult thing. We started this process by hiring a consultant to help guide us through the process, and the consultant that we retained was from Associated Financial Group. And the guidance we gave them was that the coverage has to be comparable or better. We want, the network was very important to our employees, and so we want to have a network that is as broad as possible, and that we wouldn't make a change unless we could save money, and preferably significant amount of money, or we wouldn't want to change. As background for you, you get the chance once each year to opt out of the state program. If you don't do it within a certain time period, then you're in it again for the next year. We're in that window in which we can do it. We asked for a 30-day extension, and we're in the 30 days, so we technically have until the end of the month to make this decision. Having made the decision, if we choose to change our mind, we have until the end of the year, I believe, to change our mind for people that have opted out and want back in. But once we're out then, after the first of the year passes, then we cannot get back into the state plan for three years. The recommendation of the consultant from Associated Financial Group is a plan provided by Preferred One Insurance Company. The Preferred One network is among the broadest. You could say they are the biggest, broadest network in the upper Midwest nationwide. Probably Blue Cross Blue Shield National Network probably exceeds them, but other than that, they're broader than what our employees have had. So for example, this network includes...
Pretty much all of Minnesota, most of western Wisconsin.
Yeah.
Part of the Dakotas, part of northern Iowa, so it's a lot of the upper Midwest, which from what we can see from the book will cover most of the concerns of our employees. It covers Mayo, which for some of our employees is important.
So you've got Hudson, Baldwin Hospital, River Falls Hospital, Stillwater, Mayo, as you mentioned, University of Minnesota, United Regions. It's not to say it's everyone, but this is a very extensive network.
Similar to the network that Humana had under the state plan a few years back, so the employees are familiar with it.
Let me ask you a question about that, Devin, because you've seen this, this plan. We have not. And as you know, there is another hurdle that has to be crossed here, and that is in union contract negotiations, where we are going to be asked to have substantially equivalent coverage. Do you feel confident on that point? Because what we do here tonight can be run aground in those negotiations.
Based on what we've seen, and as I tried to outline here, it is comparable, and the plan that they presented can be tweaked. So the intent of Associated Financial Group is to look at the exclusions and all that and match it to what we have now under the state plan.
Okay.
And there may, again, we can't guarantee 100%, but it'll be...
Well, it has to be substantially equivalent.
But as far as the, the plan itself and the payments and all that, it's, it's very similar.
Okay, as far as the things that, so I talked about the network a little bit. As far as the things that are covered, there's a major significant difference here. This is a partial self-insurance plan. For single employees, there's a $2,000 deductible. For married family coverage, there's a $4,000 deductible. So the proposal is that this plan is coupled with the establishment of a health reimbursement account for each of the covered employees. And the amount that the city will put into that plan will be part of our negotiations. That's a negotiated benefit.
Okay. Question to that. There's no deductible for the state plan right now, right?
Correct.
So in essence, they're not saving any money if they were to do this, or are you paying the deductible for anybody under 65?
Well, we'll get to that.
Okay. Well, because I've got some questions.
Let's talk about the general plan details first, and then we'll get to the money.
Okay.
Okay, so the health reimbursement account is established. It's administered as a, as a fund of the city. We will pay an administrative fee per employee, and Associated will help us manage that for a set fee.
A percentage to the employee?
Percentage?
How much are you going to pay to, for each employee?
It's 15, is it $15 a month, a year?
Do you mean toward, what will we put into the health reimbursement account?
In this health plan per employee.
Well, for the purposes of tonight's discussion, all the numbers you have here assume that we put the whole 2,000 or 4,000 in their plan.
For the active employees.
For the active employees. We'll get to the money here, Randy. We'll get to the money.
Because I don't have the information, so...
Well, it's...
It's all right here. No, I read that, but there's stuff.
It's here. It's here. There aren't going to be any secrets. We've been very open about this. We had a meeting that, we had actually, the meeting that we discussed this, we had a number of employees and union representatives there listening to it. Oh, another significant piece is that the state plan caps your total lifetime payments at $2 million, which, you know, it used to be that a million dollars total lifetime payments by your insurance plan was more than adequate. It got to the point that a million wasn't enough, and a lot of plans went to 2 million. The state plan is at 2 million, this plan will be at 3 million, and that has, I already heard from some of our employees, they recognize that that's actually a much superior coverage to what the state plan is doing. Okay, so the network, the, the HRA account...
The other big thing is that the routine health exams, the lab work, the immunizations, cancer screenings, all the basic services, deductible does not apply to that. So you've got someone in relatively good health that just has an annual checkup and the annual tests. The bulk of that will be covered, and it won't be charged to the deductible.
The prescription drugs, depending on whether it's a formulary drug, a generic is 10, a formulary name brand is 20, and the non-formulary name brands are 40. But again, here, you know, all the plans have a formulary, and we were told by our consultant that there's formularies and there's formularies, and this one is actually a more generous and broader list of what's covered at the 20 than the, than the state plan. So in terms of coverages, the directive was it has to be matched to the state plan, comparable or better in every way, and we're confident that it is in that regard. Okay, then let's talk about the three groups. So we have the active employees group, we have the retirees who are not yet Medicare eligible for the most part. Those are retirees that aren't 65, or whatever. Medicare, what's the age of Medicare eligibility?
65.
65. And, and the third group are retirees who are Medicare eligible, but we've had a number of them who have chosen to continue to pay for our state plan rather than to go on another Medicare supplement plan. Okay, so the active retirees will pay...
Active employees.
Active employees, I mean. All the retirees are active, and with this health plan, I mean, they're going to live so long that they'll all be active. Hey. Okay, so for the active employees, you've got the issue of the premium. Then you've got the issue of the contribution into the HRA account. The HRA account remains the property of the employee. It's at the discretion of the employee. It can be... It can be used for other kinds of health-related things. We'll need to write the details of that plan yet, but it's totally up to us how we write it, and we'll write it in such a way in, in discussion and, and negotiation with the employees and the union groups.
And you're saying that's going to be 100% contribution?
I'm saying that for the purposes of tonight's discussion about whether this makes financial sense, that we are assuming that there would be 100% contribution. But, that takes me to the point of the premium. Now, we've been paying 100% of premium for the active employees. We are now the only municipality, you could get in your car and run out of gas before you could get to another place where someone else pays 100%. The most common thing now is probably either 95 or 90%. And, so the question of what, how we will do that, now, we, we have more options and more flexibility as we negotiate that. And we will be doing that as we go through the, the union negotiations. We've, we're underway with that right now, and we've been entering into those negotiations with the knowledge that, and, and with advising them about all of this, about what the potential savings might be, and so on. So that's the active employees. Okay, for the retirees who are not Medicare eligible.
And that group is from what, retirement to 65?
If they retired at 48.
From retirement till 65. Retirement meaning that they took a, take a benefit from, it's not a retirement.
Then 65 plus is Medicare.
Medicare, Medicare. Okay, so for that group, they would be allowed to be on this plan, but they would pay the premium themselves. They're, right now, they're on the state plan, but they're paying the premium themselves. Okay, for that group, we would not make the HRA payment for them, which means if they have married coverage.
It'll be about 16,000 a year, whereas right now it's 22,000 a year.
23, so they'd get better coverage with a better lifetime maximum, and a bit, much bigger and more favorable network. But it would save those individuals around $500 a month. That's their savings, $500 a month.
And they would be, we would, they would be under our group until they went on Medicare, and we would then be billing them. They have to be part of our group, but they can't be billed separately by Preferred One, so we will take care of that administratively.
If they were a active employee who then retired, like we've had a couple of retirements here, and let's say we were five years, 10 years in the future, we would have been putting $4,000 each year into, this is in the hypothetical, because this is yet to be negotiated, but let's just say we're putting, we're contributing the entire deductible into the HRA. $4,000 a year, do it for five years, now you retire, your account has got $20,000 plus accumulated interest and earnings in it. That's yours, you could use that to purchase health insurance. For a single person, that would buy you free health insurance for a number of years. And so that's how it will work for active employees transitioning into retirement in the pre-Medicare-eligible age range in the future with this plan. Okay, so that takes care of the second group. Third group, Medicare-eligible. Under the state plan, it is required that you allow Medic, Medicare-eligible retirees to be on your plan. That's a requirement in the state plan. That's one of the reasons the state plan has become so expensive and completely out of the range of people. What we asked is find a way that we can have coverage for those people, same coverage or better, less money. And so under, under this plan, they will not be eligible to be on our plan. So from an underwriting standpoint, we aren't underwriting them. The cost of their healthcare no longer affects the cost of our state patrol officer's healthcare. But, what we're suggesting there is a plan that our consultant worked with this in switching some others. One was the Eau Claire School District.
Chippewa County.
Chippewa County also, and they've switched those retirees off state, the state-type plan. In one case, it was the WAC plan, which is Cadillac Insurance. In another case, it was this plan, switched them to this Medica Group plan, and the retirees love that plan. The Medica Group, it's got an extensive network, there's no deductible. There's a thousand dollars max annual out-of-pocket. There's no lifetime maximum on it at all, so the 2 million, 3 million thing is gone. Right now, they're capped at 2 million as long as they stay on that state plan. And that can be significant for a retiree who suddenly has significant healthcare costs. You can burn through a lot of, and you can end up, you don't have insurance anymore. It covers 100% of most medical expenditures in coordination with Medicare, and the rate is fairly significantly less than what those retirees are paying right now.
259.
I think it was, yeah, so it's about $300, $400 less a month for a couple.
So our pre-Medicare retirees are going to save about $500 a month for a couple, and our post, our Medicare-eligible post-65 retirees are going to save in the neighborhood of $300 a month.
And they met today, individuals from Associated met with a number of our annuitants today, went through the plan with them, explained it to them. For the most part, it sounds like it went well. Those that were unable to make it, they're going to make personal contact with, so we, they did have that meeting today, so they're aware of what's happening.
And they can go anywhere and buy this plan, they don't have to buy it from our
Correct.
They could buy a different plan if they wanted to, but we're putting together kind of a mini-group deal here just for them, and we've got, what, eight or nine that are eligible, and
We have two or three that will be
Has this information gone to them?
Yep.
Like a pamphlet or something?
That's today's meet, yes, today's meeting was about that, and those that, and those, everybody that is retired, whether they were 65 or Medicare-eligible or not, was invited to today's meeting because I thought they're going to be there soon or eventually. So, and those that weren't, they will be making individual contact with to go through the information with them. Those that are under 65 will be invited to the meetings with our regular employees, you know, so they're made aware of how that's, the claims and everything are filed.
Okay, so before we talk about the premium costs and so on, are there questions about the coverage, the network, the, how the three groups are impacted by this? Let's go to the money, which is on the back of your, of your handout. There's two ways to look at it, you can look at it as the citywide, that means all funds, which would include our revenue funds of the water utility and the wastewater plant and ambulance service.
Library.
Library and so on. That's what we mean when we say citywide or all funds. The other column is the general fund, and that's where it matters for this year's budget discussions, for the budget that we have control over. And then again, I've, I've got this presented for you in two different ways. One is to compare what's being proposed versus what will happen if we stick with the status quo and go forward with the state plan for 2009. And the other comparison is how much we'd save compared to last year. The reason that's significant is that we've completed our budget up to this point utilizing the 2008 numbers. And so if all the budget discussions that you've heard, everything that's been talked about by the finance committee, and we've got our budget well down the road, and we're, we're, we're meeting our targets, and, and we've been looking at the requested items and things, all of that is out the window if we make this change because we are, we're going to be looking for extra money to pay for healthcare.
If we don't make
If we don't make the change. Okay, so with that, maybe you want to look at the all-funds numbers. So as I said, the state plan, if we stick with it, will cost us just under one and a half million next year. 1,487,499 is our premium for that for next year. For the, for the recommended plan, if you go to the top of this, I'll show you how this ties together. The recommended plan is a $2,000 deductible for single coverage and 4,000 for family coverage. And so you can see that we have 14 employees on the single plan, we have 61 families on the family plan. The single plan, the premium rate would be $5,028 for next year. For the families, it would be $12,276 for next year. Okay, so you go to the next column, that gives our total cost of premium, the city would be paying all of that. The next column, you come to the HRA funding, okay? Now, we will be funding that into the employees' plans. After that, it's up to their discretion whether they go to the doctor and use that money. So there are checkups and mammograms and all those kind of routine things, that won't go into that because that's covered first dollar anyway.
But that, of that 244 of the 61 families, that $2,000, that's their deductible, they do not have to pay out? They will, what, ask for a check or something?
After it goes to Preferred One, it'll come back and it'll go to a different part of Preferred One, who then will take it out of their HRA.
Right.
So it's a two-step process.
Really no out-of-pocket funds for those families?
And it's 4,000 for a family?
Depending on the, you know, final negotiations of that amount, but yes, in theory, and that's, this is based on that, assuming that we're going to pay the full 2 and 4.
Okay, and so you can see that column shows the HRA funding. And then out to the right, you've got the total cost, and you can see that the total cost for all funds of the proposed plan is then 1,091,228. And again, that's if we fund the entire HRA funding, and again, that's if we continue to pay 100% of the premium cost, which as I said, we're the only one left around doing that, so that, yes.
Fine, I correct that, some of, um, 90 employees contribute, I contribute a percent of my
It's a, it's 95 of 100% when he says 100%. It's close to it, right?
That's my correct.
Right. There's a small, the employees contribute about, you know, right?
95% of 105% of whatever the cost is.
The lowest-cost premium, so it's about $4 a month.
How much?
$4 a month if they take the lowest-cost plan, and if they choose one of the higher, more expensive plans. And actually, all of, that is in the union contracts as well now, so they're all the same.
All right, so if we, did you calculate that part into this? The 95% of 105?
No.
So because this is going down by two-thirds, instead of paying $4 a month, if you did that same thing, or if we asked you to do the same thing, then you'd go down to $2.50 a month.
Either way, we're saving money on
Well, right, so back to the bottom part, and you can see what we'll save by doing this. Citywide, all funds, we would save just short of $400,000 next year. We'll, we'll see a full, a third cut off our health insurance cost. And for the general fund, we will be saving $289,387. The long and the short of that, if you go down to the lower right corner, the general fund, 203,803 is the savings for the general fund. When I did my budget presentation to you, I optimistically projected that we might be able to save as much as $240,000 for the general fund. That isn't going to happen. When I suggested that, I suggested that we should utilize no more than $160,000 of whatever the savings is, and whatever is left over that, we should put that away in a dedicated fund for healthcare costs that would help buffer the effect of future increases. We've been assured that while no one can know what happens with healthcare cost and healthcare inflation, there's no reason to think that we'll have some huge, you know, here's the rate, lure you in, now next year it's up 20%.
Right, and I think you had asked if they're locking into any I think we still haven't received an answer on that, have we?
The only thing they'll guarantee for the two years is the administrative fee, which is minimal.
Okay.
But I believe they said it's between 6 and 10, or 6 and 8 was the number they had thrown out that evening.
Two years.
Pre-annual is what they're experiencing.
6 to 8% is about what medical, medical inflation has been running. You know, again, even on the state plan, there's been no guarantee, they tell us what it is and we have to pay it. It was 10% this year, a few years ago it was 20%.
And one year it was 2, I mean, it's all over the board.
Questions about the cost implications?
I have a question regarding the cost savings. How much of the savings are we going to allocate toward the newly created position of benefits manager? Because this is going to take somebody quite a bit of time.
It'll be done administratively by Preferred One.
Okay.
Yes, they will handle both aspects, both the initial billing and the HRA administration will be paying them. I think it's $19 a month or $18 a month per employee.
So the consultant won't be hand, the consultant is no longer going to be tied in with this?
No, they, they're not, no, Preferred One will be the administrator of this program. I think it's a subsidiary, and they handles the HRA, but
So not, we're not going to be paying a fee to any third party to administer benefits?
Yes, we will be.
Well, we will be, but it's included in these numbers.
Okay, it is included, okay.
Yes, and like I said, it's about $19 a month, I believe is what the quote was.
And from my point of clarification, the worst-case scenario, if the union negotiations break down, we're paying $1,009, still saving, is that correct, am I?
No.
The, the total all funds.
If, well, if, if we, you're asking if there's, this is the maximum, yes. This assumes we don't, they don't pay any, or don't pay any portion of the insurance cost, and they, we fund completely the HRAs.
We're still saving with that number.
I think Randy's concern was making it through contract negotiations, and if we, if they do, we just stalemate. I think the thing that's going for us this year, and last year, certainly everyone in the room saw the hand ready on the wall for this, that we're going to be looking at comparables. And as the mayor mentioned, you're going to have to go very far away to find another city that's still doing this old way. And so there aren't any comparables for that, there are comparables for doing it the new way.
And there will be a, if for some reason this doesn't fly, it will be a major impact on the budget, and there'll be a whole different group of decisions that will need to be made. Because you can see right there what the impact will be on the budget.
Well, no one can, I mean, the reason you call it a negotiation is because parties are going to get together and talk about what's in their best interests. But in this case, we're on the same side of the table, is there's no reason for this to be adversarial. It's, it's good for everyone, there's something here in this that's good for everyone.
And I agree, and it's a complex issue.
I don't honestly anticipate a problem coming from the unions. I've yet to hear any problem from them, in fact, to the extent that I can divulge what we've talked about. I mean, they recognize too that we've, we've got a plan that's so expensive that, you know, it affects how much their base pay is going to be, because you have to look at the whole package. So with that, now we're back to the motion to suspend the rules, which is on the table, which requires a roll-call vote. And as soon as you don't have any more questions about this, we'll suspend the rules. We can have some more discussion if you'd like before we adopt the resolution. Any more discussion before we vote on this? Roll-call vote.
Wyland?
Yes.
Churchill?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes.
All right, the rules are suspended towards adoption of Resolution 2008 to consider withdrawal from the state, let me read the official title. Withdrawal from Wisconsin Public Employers Group Health Insurance Program of the Wisconsin Department of Employee Trust Funds, Madison, Wisconsin. Pursuant to the provisions of Wisconsin statutes, Section 40.51 Sub 7, the common council of the city of Hudson, Wisconsin, resolves to withdraw from participation in the Wisconsin Public Employers Group Health Insurance Program effective next January 1, 2009. We understand that coverage will terminate for all insured participants, including annuitants, and any participants who are on continuation of coverage. We understand that the city may not reapply for participation in the Wisconsin Public Employers Group Health Insurance Program for three years. We have a motion on the resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution 20-08.
All right, we have a motion to adopt, and a second to adopt Resolution 20-08. Any further discussion or questions?
I just have a comment, the amount of time and effort that went in, both from the insurance company and the, the employees working on this, this is a win-win situation for our
for our employees and the city. I believe that it's going to be a good thing for both, again, the cities and the employees. And the big lifetime benefit of, of going from two million to three million is a, is a real plus. And the ability to have that two thousand or four thousand dollars put into your account, and it's the employees' money after that. Yes, they can use it for healthcare, but if they don't have to use it, they keep that money. So this is a good plan, and hopefully this can be adopted during our negotiations with our unions.
I'd like to acknowledge and thank Devin Willey for the tremendous amount of work he's put in on this. It's been a, a real effort on his part to bring all this together. And Devin, I thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Resolution is adopted. I think we covered item, oh.
I would also like a motion just to authorize me and the staff to work with associated, just to get that down. If I could have that, please.
So moved to authorize you, the city administrator and associate financial group, to begin this process.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? You understand he's going to start enrolling. I think further, we'll need to begin to write.
Yep.
Some of the policies that'll be involved with the HRA account and so on. And so we'll be coming back to the council with some of those details before long. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Number F, consider whether to advertise RFPs for municipal insurance coverage. I ask that this be put on the agenda because it came to my attention that we have not done it for, since the year two thousand. And I think in general, we talked about our procurement policy. This is a relatively large item. It's the kind of thing that we may want to do. It takes a certain amount of time to write the documents to do it, although our current insurance company will probably provide us with most of what we need to do to get in apples and oranges. And so I'm looking for feedback from you about whether you think we can do it. I mean, it may take city administrator or finance department, I'm not sure exactly who will have to do it. I mean, it's going to take a little bit of staff time. But even if we saved ten or fifteen thousand dollars, it might be well worth it. And we're talking about a significant amount of money in the.
When's the renewal date?
January first.
I don't think we have time.
Well, we do have time. I mean.
Well, I mean, in order to get a bid. Right now, we have to assemble the package and, and giving a company sixty days to, not a lot of time on a, on a account this big.
Al, but you, you would know better than I do, but isn't an RFP for this type of policy running, usually run to like two-hundred-some pages?
No, it wouldn't be that. Forty pages, probably, thirty, forty pages. There's usually a format.
These things are huge, though, to, so it's a lot of time to prepare it.
Usually the insurance company are existing, will, will put all the requirements.
Well, we have contacted Wassa already, and, you know, they have a format.
Here's, here's the deal for, for new council members and, and old, but the, those who have been around longer and were here when we went through this before.
Look at me.
Wassa, Wassa Insurance provides insurance, they are a big company, they're a big Wisconsin company, and they provide this kind of coverage. Rattle off for me, Devin, the different coverages that we have under this.
Workers, workman's compensation, general liability, umbrella liability, auto, crime, boiler, the life, the insurance that covers you guys, the errors and emissions-type insurance. The only thing we do not have them with them is the property insurance. We have that through the local government property insurance through the state, because it's substantially less expensive. But basically, all of our insurance, with the exception of the health insurance, is through Wassa.
So here's some history for you. You know, Wassa is basically, it's a, it's a one-stop-shop. Almost everyone uses them. Use them year after year. You don't go out to bid. They tell you what it's going to cost, and that's it. And that's the way it's been for a long time. Okay, the League of Municipalities decided to get into this a few years back. In two thousand, they had a company they were working with that was a division of Kemper Insurance. They suggested that we go through this to try to bring the cost down for municipalities like ourselves. We did it. We chose Kempus. The service and claim service and so on was not up to our standards, and a year later, we went back to Wassa. And there we've been ever since. We're back to the thing of, they tell us what the premium is. We don't go out to bid or ever bid it, and we pay what they say. Now, the League of Municipalities has a new carrier for their, right?
I believe so. I'm not sure what the carrier is, but they do have a new carrier, yes.
They've got a new carrier. The new carrier said, yep, if you, if you'll do this, you have to approve it at your next, you know, at your meeting, but there's time. All we need is thirty days. Wassa already knows what they're going to charge you, but they'll have a thirty days to change it. If they know you're bidding, you might save some money.
I'll make the motion to put it out.
So it's a matter of, is it worth spending the time? We've got an election coming up. You know, the question is, do you want to do it? Do you want to stick with Wassa for another year without bids? And I'm looking for your input. If it was up to me, I'd bid it.
I make the motion to bid the insurance.
We have a motion in a second to advertise for bids on our municipal insurance coverage. Discussion.
I wonder about the logistics of it. As Al mentioned, the timing, you know, we're, we're at the twentieth of October. There's no way you're going to get an ad out for RFPs before the first week of November. You give them thirty days for response. You're talking, you're already into December. We had said, you had mentioned earlier in the meeting that we would have budget done by November twenty-fourth. We're already past that date, and we have ju, haven't even discussed the RFPs for insurance. I wonder if it's doable in the, in the timeframe.
Well, we, we have the number in our budget already for insurance that's based on status quo. We wouldn't make a change unless it had a beneficial budget impact. I'm, I'm not sure I see where the problem is.
Well, you wouldn't have that discussion about whether or not it's beneficial till mid-December.
Can you alter the budget after it's been approved to?
Well, the budget hasn't, doesn't have to be done until December thirty-first.
Oh, okay.
No, the budget has to be done by December first, if we're going to get tax bills off by December.
Oh, okay, for tax bill purposes.
But I'm still not sure I see where the problem is.
If we reduce the cost of the insurance for some reason, then that would just be money that could be.
Right, reallocated somewhere else, yeah.
I'm not going to vote against the motion. I'm just saying, we may be investing some time here that we're, for, for responses that we're not going to have time to consider.
It's possible. I did ask for the file for when it was done before, and the, the dates of all the correspondence on that was actually in November, and it got done. I mean, realistically, there are probably two providers here.
Oh, well.
And you've essentially, you've got Wassa who we're with, and it's a question, are we going to switch to this other company? They're the company who called and suggested, hey, you know, if you'd like to look at it, we'd love to bid. But to do that, we've got to go through the process. So it isn't like we're going to have to wait so terribly long. We could advertise for fourteen days, and we.
But you still need to put it out for a reasonable length of time, so enough people get to RFP it, so it doesn't look like you're, you're making a specific switch to another company. You need to have that time period.
We will do that.
Yeah.
And in the file last time, I believe, we actually, we sent to all our local brokers and so on. I mean, if you've got a way to provide this for us, go ahead and get in and bid.
Okay, good.
Further discussion?
I would like to be involved in it, or at least looking at the proposals.
We won't send you a letter, then.
Don't send me a letter.
Because you did get a letter last time.
And we will, I'm sure we will need assistance, because as we said, there's the election, there's budget, you know. So we'll, but we'll get on it. We've got the Wassa already volunteered to give us the form and the management.
Oh, a question out here, yes?
We get our insurance, the library itself, the liability, and then Wassa and local property, will we be considered?
Local property won't be affected by this, and you're, you are, you're, I believe they're, they're an independent policy, right, for Wassa?
I think so.
So that would be a decision then the library board would make as to whether they wanted to stay with Wassa. I guess, maybe if you want to call Jim O'Connor and have him, if you guys want to be included in this bid process, I would need to know that soon, so that we could make sure that information was included. The other thing, too, obviously, is that we'll have to do some checking, and maybe Al can help us with that for municipalities that do utilize the league to find out. I mean, we've got a really good, not that that's the end-all, but we've got a really good relationship with Wassa as far as the safety training and everything. So we would need to check on that, too, depending on the cost savings.
I think the, the point for me is, in this type of relationship, you don't need to bid this every year. But if we haven't done it for six or eight years, where's the point where you say it's time? I don't see why we wouldn't. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, let's see. That care, the motion carries, and that takes us to Communications and Recommendations of the Mayor. I thought it was a great event this weekend, went smoothly. We had no problems. The Spirit of the St. Croix and the fishing tournament, the professional walleye trail was here. We had lots of people in town that were interested, people that were out watching the fish come in. And it was amazing to see them bring in all those big walleyes every day. I mean, day after day, they can go out there and catch a limit of walleyes. And there's, we have a fishery here that more people need to come to Hudson and the St. Croix area and take advantage of that fishing. Reports of city officials, we had, well, Betty didn't get on the agenda. Betty, Betty provided for you a written copy of her finance officer's report. And because it's not on the agenda, I'm going to ask you to read that, ask questions, and she'll be available at our next meeting to, oh, you've got them. Do you want to hand them out? Yeah, why don't we hand those out? And then communications and items for future agendas from any older person.
Just a communication that our accounts payables are now on the website. If you want to look and see what bills the city is paying, you can go take a look at, it's open to the public. Kind of a nice thing to take a look at.
They are. I've asked Jan to add that to the website, and we're actually going to be remodeling that a little bit into a finance page, where you can go and read things like our procurement policy will be on there. As we go forward with the budget, we're going to put our budget on there. Our accounts payable, essentially, it's like putting our checkbook register on the internet, so that people that are interested can look at that and see where the money's going.
I have two items.
Yes.
And I don't know, Denny maybe could help. On Berkmost Hill, there's a public safety issue with the, I guess, the south side coming down. I don't know if we need to address it. It's a private road, I believe. There's potholes in there, and it's in terrible shape. I know the public works used to plow it, but it is falling apart. It's dangerous at Berkmost Hill. And the other.
Questions you want city, city involved in that?
Well, we need to enforce something to get it fixed, because more than likely, somebody's going to run off the road.
Well, we really can't have a lot of discussion on items for future agendas, other than for you to bring it to our attention. We'll look into it, have staff review it, and we'll, we'll bring it back to you.
And then the other thing is Laurel and Blakeman, the city parking lot, former city or hospital parking lot, which is now privately. The neighbors are concerned about it becoming a storage yard for junk.
Okay.
So I think we need some enforcement or whatnot up there.
We can do that.
I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween at the end of next week. Friday, the thirty-first, there will be the parade downtown. And after that, the kids are all released into the neighborhoods. Be careful, they're going to be out on the streets, as the sun does set earlier. So everyone have a happy and safe Halloween. And during this Halloween season, those of you in the fifth district that I represent, as always, if you have any problem getting your leaf bags to the drop-off, the Elbs and I will pick them up for you. Just call me.
Yes, Laurie?
Um, I think we would be remiss if we didn't thank you, Mayor, for your work on the health insurance move out of the state plan. It's been tried before in years past, but not successfully. And I think it's taken a team effort. Devin, you've done a great job as well, but just appreciate the mayor driving this, because it was, it was a fairly involved process. And thank the employees for their cooperation as well. So, that's it.
Thank you. Lee?
Dan? City Attorney.
I'm here.
Devin?
Couple quick things. We're getting to the point where we can start distributing some of the budget documents. If the council could let me know whether they want that in paper form, whether they want it in PDF. It doesn't matter to me. I just need to know how to prepare the documentation, so just shoot me an email, let me know which form you prefer. There'll be, will be substantial paper, but the mayor and I were talking, and if it's something that you could just easily review PDF, that's fine, too. So just let me know on that. One more plea before the election. Please come and get registered if you're not. If you do not register prior to election day, you will be waiting in line for a long time. We know the turnout's going to be substantial. We do have absentee voting here and registration here every day between now and the day before the election, all day, every day. They're in room two and eleven across the hall, so we do have that service available. So if you're either unavailable or wish to vote ahead of time, it can be done. And if everybody just remembers on election day to be patient, you know, we've got extra staff there. We've got as many people as we can, but there will be lines. And you, we only remember that every four years. Usually you go into elections, it's pretty quick, so. Thank you.
Moved to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, adjourn.